Mr. Bracken.
Here.
Mr. Ellerby.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Pethard.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aragon.
Here.
The citizens of the United States of America, in the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, move on to public participation, and we have a proclamation for the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Let us read that. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union; and whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities; and whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 definitely did a king holiday as a national day of voluntary service; and whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all, the principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948; and whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their laborers and communities on the King Holiday; and whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation; and whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service, and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holidays, and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Chantel Legu, Vice Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim January 16th, 2023, to be Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of 2023 in the City of Oxford, and encourage all Oxford residents to remember, celebrate, and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And it doesn't look like we have someone to receive this right now, right? Oh, you are.
Anne, you're on the recording secretary for the local branch of the NAACP.
Mike, do you want to say anything?
The local branch of the NAACP meets every first Monday this month. It's the second Monday of the month at 7:00 PM. And we welcome anyone to join us for our meeting. We've just elected new officers and new chairs of our committees and members at large of the executive committee. And we welcome any collaboration, partnership with local organizations, and appreciate all of the city's work in guaranteeing racial justice in the community. Thank you very much for this proclamation.
I just wanted to add, this month, because the holiday was pushed back to the second Monday. So if you want to attend this month, you can come on Monday.
Okay, anyone wishing to address council about items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, please come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, may we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
Are there any items to be removed? All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so move on to our first resolution. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Southeastern Equipment Company Incorporated for the purchase of specified equipment listed in the Sourcewell Contract number 032119 CNH dated November 17th of 2022 for an amount not to exceed $237,005.98. Do you have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Good evening. The city council has approved a capital replacement budget. There's $240,000 budgeted for this machine. This is a large articulating loader that's used across all of our divisions. It's a very important machine for our operations. What we're proposing to buy is a twin to what we have currently, just the modern model. We don't expect to receive delivery of this until the third quarter. Once we receive delivery of the new machine, we'll come back to council to ask for permission to dispose of the old unit, invite electronic auction, or trade it to the dealer wherever we feel we can get the rest of it. If you'd like to answer any questions.
Does anyone from the public wish to make a comment? Seeing none, council discussion?
Just be interested where the lifetime is of one of them.
Approximately 10 to 15 years, depending on how much use it gets.
Guess I would also just note that it's for those who are bus- those who are in the public who follow the kind of things that the city has to budget for while we're trying to do some, like high-minded social priorities over here. We also need a piece of equipment to move stuff. And these, and so some of the basic operational functions of the city are important and not just paid. They're a big part of our budget, $237,000 is a lot of equipment. We use it for a long time, it seems like. So you'll use it wastewater, water distribution.
For all of our utilities. It's used to load salt, and we use it for composting facility. It's used citywide.
So we're going to have a voice vote on paper?
Aye.
All opposed, and that passes. So move on to our ordinance in our first reading. An ordinance levying upon the lots and lands enumerated in the list of estimated assessments of the amounts set forth on such list and setting forth terms for payment of assessments.
So this is the fourth and final piece of legislation, the Curb-Gutter Sidewalk Assessment Program. So property owners with deficiencies were notified early in the year and given the opportunity to replace their deficient curb gutter or sidewalk. The city then authorized the contract for those that did not make the improvements. With the last resolution of actual costs, there were 34 properties that were going to be assessed. Since that time, 11 have paid, so we're down to only 23 properties. So that's a pretty good number, given the number that we started with back in February. Owners can pay this bill through their taxes over five years at 5% interest, or they can still pay within 30 days of the passage of this ordinance. Would you like to answer questions?
Okay, are there any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the second first reading. An ordinance repealing the November 2008 Oxford Comprehensive Plan and all the amendments thereto, and adopting a new comprehensive plan entitled Oxford Tomorrow.
Good evening, council members. I'm delighted to bring to you a comprehensive plan recommendation for our planning commission, so this is what it looks like. And there's the previous ones, even though they look very similar in size, they're a lot different on the inside. And I'll be introducing our consultants to you. But before that, I wanted to give kudos to City Planner Zachary Moore, who coordinated this project and got it started for us on the staff side back two years ago. And then in October of 2021, MKSK was authorized by city council to be our consultant to help us get this project over the finish line. And so we're very delighted with their work. And I will say that there are 162 plan recommendations in the new plan. There were 254 in the previous plan. And there are a lot, there's a lot of difference between them, even though the numbers are also different. So future land use map is a big part of that, that we hope to be working more directly and specifically on with planning commission, and hopefully with surrounding jurisdictions. There are some new elements that weren't in the previous plan as well. So we're happy words at it. We're very happy with the public input and the steering team, the steering committee that helped with that, the boards and commissions. It was a very engaging process. So I'll turn it over to Sarah Lilly with MKSK.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan to you all tonight. So I, Sam did a great introduction. I'll just quickly go through some slides. A lot of this will be a repeat from what was presented at planning commission and at our last public meeting, so. But feel free to stop me if you want further clarification, if you have any questions. So firstly, I just want to emphasize that the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan is truly a community-driven vision for the future of Oxford over the next 10 years and beyond. We engaged community members through a number of different methods throughout the process. Over 800 members of the Oxford community participated in the process. And I'll just also make a note that the page numbers up to the top right of these slides correspond to where the information is in the full plan document, if you're following along there. So we did hold three key public input sessions, the last of which happened in November. These really built on one another and involved a lot of activities along the way to gather input. And there were also corresponding online ways for folks to participate who couldn't attend in person. And we really had great levels of participation throughout this process, which is pretty unique, given that COVID was still, is still very much present. And we were able to engage folks in person and digitally and virtually to really have robust engagement. And a lot of the comments we heard were transformed directly into the plan recommendations that you see before you. So the plan is really laid out according to the framework that you see here. And like Sam mentioned, there are 162 actions which take the form of policies, projects, and programs that the city and partners can implement over the course of the plan's life. And those actions will really vary in terms of their complexity and their cost and their scale. And we really also wanted to focus on calling attention to the difference between how the city can control versus influence certain plan recommendations. So we know that, you know, the city staff and boards and commissions won't be able to accomplish everything alone in this plan, that it's going to require a lot of collaboration with institutions, with Miami University, with other public agencies to really achieve this. So we really tried to call out the things that are directly within the city's control and then that are within your influence. So that's something I would call attention to in this plan. We also, with the community's help and feedback, we refined and created this vision statement that you see here, which is really a broad aspirational statement that sets the tone for this plan and who Oxford wants to be as a community over the next 10 years. So we want to focus on being a vibrant community that is welcoming to all, that has, you know, the values that are listed in this vision statement of equity and inclusion, environmental sustainability, fiscal responsibility, having lots of housing and job opportunities, and so on. So it's really, it's kind of sets the tone for the plan. And then we get into the eight planned goals, which describe a desired outcome over the next 10 years. So Oxford Tomorrow will be a sustainable Oxford. Oxford Tomorrow will have housing opportunities for everyone, and so on. And the plan itself, the plan document, is organized into four chapters. The, really the bulk of the plan is going to be in that chapter three, the recommendations. The first chapter sets kind of the central background information. The second chapter summarizes who we talked to and what we heard in the community engagement process. And then that recommendations chapter is really the meat of the plan, where you'll find all of the goals, objectives, and actions across the eight topics that are covered in the plan. And then the implementation section is probably what I imagine most of you all will be referencing most often. It's really kind of a summary of everything that's in the plan in a nice kind of concise matrix. So like Sam mentioned, the future land use map is a really essential part of the comprehensive plan. With a comprehensive plan, we're asking how, what do we want future growth to look like? And the land use character types that you see on the screen, there's 12 of them, really seek to answer that question, how we want Oxford to look and feel across the different land uses that are present in the community. A lot of these are existing and already are really exemplary in the community, preserves and green space. We've heard a lot about how that's really a key community attribute for Oxford and the high-quality preserves and parks and green spaces. A lot of these will be pretty self-explanatory when you look at them, like campus is pretty self-explanatory, rural is pretty self-explanatory. And there's really kind of a handful that we kind of focused in on as being areas of opportunity, maybe going forward for future development and redevelopment. So that pink category, the mixed-use center, employment corridor, employment center, urban neighborhood, I would call attention to as being kind of key areas where maybe we think about the land use looking a bit different in the future for those, for those land use character types. And a lot of why land use is so significant is because it does relate a lot to other topics in the plan and really can help the city to accomplish a lot of its other goals, including housing goals, providing housing opportunities for everyone, for all, of, you know, diversifying the local tax base and local employment opportunities through focusing on those employment uses. So it's really a key section of the comprehensive plan. And the map is really showing where we see those future land uses being present in Oxford over, over the future. So also with, and within the future land use map, you'll see five hatched areas. Those are focus areas, as we call them in the plan. And these are really areas where they might require a bit additional study or additional planning work to understand how they might change over, over the short and long term. And maybe the land uses that are shown underneath those patches might be reimagined in the future. So really quickly, at our last public meeting, we held a prioritization activity where we showed the public all 162 actions in the plan, and we asked them to choose the ones, the five per topic that were most important to them. And that results in 40 actions out of the 162 that are maybe a good first place to start for you all, for staff, for boards and commissions, a good first place to look at for implementation. So these are the five recommendations on each of these slides are those priorities that we heard about. The priorities for the land use and development section were really, a lot of them were kind of broad policy statements or kind of value statements, making sure that new developments include ample green space, favoring kind of urban qualities over more auto-oriented designs, allowing for adaptive reuse, things like that. So they're really kind of value statements. The mobility priorities were not super surprising to me, having heard a lot of these priorities throughout the process of, you know, people are really excited about the potential for Amtrak. People really recognize some of the barriers of the rail and the truck route that goes through Uptown. So wanting to find alternatives for those traffic barriers, wanting to make sure that we treat pedestrians and cyclists with equal importance to vehicles. And we heard a lot about how much people love the Oxford area trail system, so wanting to really continue to focus on that as a priority for the city and completing that loop. So these were, again, not super surprising to me, but good to see them reiterated as priorities. We did hear a lot about housing throughout the process. It's a big concern for communities everywhere right now. And so the, the priorities that came out of the exercise, I think really provide tangible ways that the city can work to improve that housing diversity and housing affordability within Oxford moving forward. So things like allowing for potentially increased density diversity of housing types and living arrangements, identifying where we might allow for more accessory dwelling units, supporting housing that, for people experiencing homelessness or other crises where you might need more supportive and transitional housing. So these are all really kind of tangible programs or policies that the city can address, work to address the housing issues that we heard about. In terms of economic development, these, a lot of these are things you're already doing well, like supporting local entrepreneurship, creating activities and events that drive economic impact. So it's reiterating the importance of those existing programs and recommendations while maybe adopting or creating an economic development strategic plan that might create, identify more targeted incentives that the city can use to attract new businesses and workforce to Oxford. Sustainability is kind of a, one of the more robust topics within this plan. It is kind of a new sort of standalone section within the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan. And a lot of the actions in that section really correlate to some of the, or the climate action planning work that's being done as well in the community. So a lot of these, you'll see some, some alignment between the Climate Action Plan and Oxford Tomorrow Plan in emphasizing the need for alternative energy within Oxford, for creating climate, or creating resilient buildings and creating a resilient community. And also creating, or continuing to create a more green community through street trees and green infrastructure, things like that. The culture and recreation section, again, people love the parks and green spaces and recreation amenities in Oxford. And so we want to continue to focus on investing in those systems. So one of the things we heard a lot about that the community is interested in is the development of a community center that can provide year-round recreation opportunities as well as other community and social services, developing programming, and continuing to improve access to parks, physical and otherwise, through trails, and also just promotion of the parks and green spaces in Oxford. The community well-being chapter is also a new term for this comprehensive plan, but it comes with a lot of ideas that are not new to Oxford, including diversity, equity, and inclusion, public safety, public health. So it's really kind of an umbrella topic that covers a lot within it. So we heard a lot in our early engagement about the need for more childcare and elder care and also mental health services. So I think we see that here with the priorities that are listed on the slide, as well as a couple others. So making sure we're working with the university on key kind of social and community issues is a big one. So this is, again, kind of a new topic, but it covers a lot of things that we've discussed in previous plans as well. And then lastly is the utilities section, which may not be, sound as exciting as the others, but it's certainly just as important, if not more so. We know that utilities and infrastructure really make the rest of the city work. So some of these, again, won't be new to you all, and they weren't new to the community either. We heard about wanting to make sure that we're expanding broadband access in Oxford and even the broader region. This could even benefit Oxford in terms of economic development for allowing more milk workers here. We heard about water quality and through the water softening project, as well as making sure that lead water pipes are not existent anymore in the community. And then also making sure we're protecting water quality at the source through stream corridor protections, as well as low-impact development. So I flew through that really quickly. So again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. But I'll just quickly kind of touch on this idea of plan stewardship, which we really cover in that fourth chapter, the implementation chapter of the plan. And this is really something that we tried to emphasize pretty heavily, that this isn't a plan that's just going to sit on the shelves, that this plan really starts actually with the adoption of it, and the work really begins from there. So we want to make sure that the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan is aligned and integrated with all the other work that's going on in the community from some supplementary plans, as we call them, that might come out of this work, so, or are already happening, like the Climate Action Plan, like the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Transportation Plan Update, and Focus Area Plans. We want to make sure that the comprehensive plan is working with the city's existing regulatory tools and any updates to those regulations that need to happen to make sure that they're aligned with the comprehensive plan. And then any ongoing kind of government efforts, like budgeting and the capital improvement plan and things like that. So we really try to emphasize that integration with all of those efforts in that fourth chapter, as well as how the plan can be used throughout the year, throughout the yearly kind of government cycle, really, of all the different efforts that go on to make sure that the city's running properly. So, you know, the plan can be brought out at the annual council retreat to help you all establish your priorities for the year. The plan can be used by staff when doing research, policy development, budget design. We want to make sure that we allow room for public input in this process, that we make sure that the budget and the comprehensive plan are aligned. And we also want to make sure that there's regular reporting on progress on the comprehensive plan, a mid-year and end-year report on what we've achieved throughout the course of the year. So with that continuous plan use and monitoring, we think it'll be a really effective plan for you all. So that's a very brief presentation tonight. I kind of looked at that, but.
No, that was great. Is there any public comments on this? Seeing none, council discussion?
Well, I'll start by somebody who is, who believes in planning, not just because I love a good plan, and this is a beautiful plan, but because of the process that's behind it. I think all of us come onto council, and we run for office, and we're representatives, and we think we know what the people are thinking. But it's hard to know, because it might just be the people you're friends with on Facebook or that you talk to. What's wonderful about a plan is like, it's really a barometer of 800-plus people participating. We have really wide participation. And it turns out that it affirms a lot of the things that we already were working on, which is really good, but also clarifies some new directions of what the people say they want us to do. So I'm, I really want to thank all the people who participated in this. Obviously, you know, starting with staff. It's been really great collaboration internally. Zach's not here, but community development, city manager's office, everybody. MKSK has done a really phenomenal job with this. The steering committee, all the people who showed up. For how many different steering committee meetings could we have?
Nine.
Nine, yeah. And all those people who came out to Zoom meetings and public meetings. You know, I think it's a sign that people believe in the exercise of planning, about thinking about the future. So Jessica says like, what is Oxford's a small town, but it thinks big, you know? I mean, this is a, this is a really bold plan that sets really broad goals. So, so thanks to everybody who participated in it. I think what this does, though, is it turns like the onus around on us, meaning council and staff, because, I mean, we had, we had a really great plan in 2008, I felt. What we didn't really have, and I wasn't on council at the time, was an infrastructure necessarily to, to take it up and, and to implement. Okay, so by the time, certain amount of time had gone on, no one was talking about the comprehensive plan at all. So I think what, but what I feel, this is my kind of promise to the public, is that while we've been working on developing a plan, we've been working really hard to develop the plan, the strategic planning framework to implement it. So everything we've been doing in our retreats, and we never had annual reports before, you know? We have annual reports, and we have metrics. And, and so the idea of taking these broad goals, using them in our retreat in a few weeks, setting annual priorities, you know, I think that we're in a much better position to implement it. The one thing that, when I, I love the diagram of 137. The one thing that I think I want to also emphasize, though, is that our, our boards and commissions are going to be really key to this. Some things are going to be like budget items that you need to pay for. But sometimes there are ideas that come out of them. It's legislation or initiatives that come out of our boards and commissions. So I really look forward to us setting our priorities and then sitting down with our boards and commissions to like figure out, what do you guys want us to work on? boards and commissions to like, figure out, what do you guys want us to work on, how can we work on it together, and tap like the amazing, I don't know, you know, Peyton and Ann out there, people like amazing energy and resources, so that the process continues to feed on itself. So, thanks to everybody who's involved and to council for supporting the budget for this, or finding money in the budget for this, Doug, and for all the staff time and resources. I think it's a good investment, but again, the onus is now on us to make sure the dividends flow from it.
I can build on that. I think this is the third or fourth time I've seen an approximation of this presentation, and I'm excited about it every time, which I think speaks volumes to the hard work that you all at MKSK have done, the hard work that city staff has done. And one of the things that I'm most excited to see reflected in this plan is every public input session, people were there, people were excited, people were telling you, good, bad, or otherwise, what they thought about the city and the direction we want to go in, and I can feel it, I can see it reflected in the plan, so I'm excited to look for it in two weeks. And again, I just want to say thank you to the public for participating wholeheartedly in this process, for city staff and for MKSK, and everybody else who's worked behind the scenes really hard to bring this super new, exciting plan to fruition, so thank you.
So we will move on to our first and only second briefing. An ordinance by Oxford City Council authorizing the city manager to take all necessary action necessary, including but not only to the negotiation and execution of the contract to purchase real estate located at 100 South Elm Street and 102 South Elm Street at a cost of $600,000 for all parcels, and to utilize American Rescue Plan Act funds in making this purchase. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
I don't have any additional information from last meeting, but I'm here to answer any questions if you have to.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to address, and maybe you can talk about this too, that we got received an email from someone who's kind of asking, why this property, why now, and what, you know, and I, and I guess I was, I was thinking about this, that one of the things that the city's doing is kind of being entrepreneurial, which is when you see an opportunity, you go for it. And so, and maybe you can address this, Jessica, the question, well, why Elm Street? And I think Elm Street, thinking about the plan, we know Elm Street today, but I think that corridor has a lot of potential to be something different and really productive for us in the future. So it's, it's actually identified in our plan as kind of an area for redevelopment, and what redevelopment means is, is, you know, but, but also the idea that sometimes why these structures, well, because you have an opportunity and you can act on it. So I don't, you know, I think that, I really appreciate that this is both like far-reaching, thinking like of all the places, Elm Street's a good place to invest, but, but B, wow, there's an opportunity, let's jump on it, and I don't know whether...
I mean, I think you answered it. I mean, that's exactly it. The college in Elm is a new, exciting adventure with my university, we're going to try to bring in new jobs and new innovation, and then these properties became available immediately next door, and in our draft comprehensive plan, it said, pay attention to Elm Street, and we were like, A, we have American Rescue dollars that can be used for economic recovery, and so we were like, we should try this. And, and so while we have to develop a plan still, we know that it's an area that's ripe with opportunity, it connects two major business zones, and I think it has just a real potential for, for growth and innovation. What exactly it will look like will probably take a few years, if I'm being honest, but that's okay, we'll take our time, we'll have public input, we'll, you know, and then we'll go from there. So, but I think exactly what you said is, why we're looking at these properties.
As far as that, you know, I'm not an expert on Oxford real estate, but these seem like relatively good priced for, for their location, what they are. I mean, investment properties are hugely expensive, which is why people say to us, why aren't you doing what Hamilton's doing? Well, your real estate in Hamilton doesn't cost what it does here in Oxford. So, these are actually reasonably priced pieces of property in our market. So, so thank you for having the forward thinking and also the jumping on an opportunity in the short term.
And to build on that, I do want to commend Jessica and your team for doing due diligence on the number of ways that we could approach an opportunity like this. I know there's been a lot of questions asked about how can we purchase property that would be used for economic purposes, and this is actually, to David's point, one of the more cost-effective ways of doing it. Some of the other options would be far outside the reach of what we could have spent this money on. So, in terms of, wow, this seems like a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but it's a far cry from how much this, an idea like this could cost the city. So this is actually a very smart way to go about this type of purchase, so. Again, to the captain, to the team.
And along with that, I don't like to say a whole lot of stuff up here, but I have to say something about this, because of that email. We started this project four years ago, when we did not rezone that property, and now look what we had. And this is just one additional step in the plan that started with the old comprehensive plan, and now is in the new comprehensive plan, and, you know, council has had the same vision that entire time, and like, you know, like you just said, it's an expensive proposition, however, there are certain things that have tremendous returns on investment that are expensive, and I feel like this is a, a just use of city funds because the returns will be significant. Also, as a sidebar, those two houses that people tend to consider to be residential properties are actually commercial properties, and they are priced as such. When you go and do a commercial valuation of a property, you look at how much money does that thing generate, and then you put a capitalization rate against it, and they are appropriately priced for the capitalization rate in Oxford and where they are. So, a lot of people don't realize that many buildings in Oxford that look like houses that are typically residential, and they used to be, are now being utilized and priced as commercial property. So, that's just one of those informational things about the public. I agree with both councilors and what they also said, it's a tremendous opportunity. Thank you guys for jumping on it, and I can't wait to vote for it.
I agree with everything I've heard, I think it's an opportunity, as far as I can tell, it's fair market value, considering. I just wanted to throw in my support for, everything's open, right? It's still malleable, we have no certified plans for it, but that we try to incorporate housing as much as possible because I think that's more indeed than economic side, even though we shouldn't be addressing all of them all these. Just wanted for my support in that.
Can we have a roll call? Mr. Eliebe?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruru?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, announcements and communications are going down.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a few things here, I just wanted to follow up on the proclamation that Vice Mayor Ragood read earlier, Mark Luther King, they, I wanted to share with the community that they do have a breakfast celebration scheduled at the Ballroom in the Schreiber Center of Miami University, and that will be from 10:00 AM, gathering and breakfast, the program starts at 11:00 AM. The keynote speaker is Dr. Carolyn Jefferson Jenkins, the fifteenth president of the League of Women Voters of the US, and recipient of the Freedom Summer of '64 Award, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, because that occurs before our next council meeting. Also, I wanted to share with the council and the community that we began management and operation of the Oxford Cemetery on January 1st. We did file the registration form with the OHI Department of Congress, they've accepted that, and they'll be issuing our certificate, so we're going to be meeting this week with the president of the Cemetery Association to get the remaining files moved over to the city, so I wanted to let the council know of that. Last thing that I wanted to share with you, it was suggested that the city meet with Miami University officials and discuss the impact that the university facilities and students have on our fire EMS operations, and we did that before Christmas. We met with Vice President David Kramer, Randy Thomas, Stephen Van Winkle, Chris Lawson of Miami University, to once again discuss the impact that they have on our fire EMS operations. We shared with them that if you look at the five-year average, 2017 to 2021, and look at the age group, which is primarily Miami University students, they represent about 28.5% of our EMS calls, and this age group is 17 to 23 years of age. Fire calls at Miami facilities, and this of course includes false alarms, represent 23.5% of fire calls at student housing, and this only looks at the housing within the Mile Square. The fire chief went by addresses in the Mile Square, so this number would be higher than it actually is because it doesn't include the annex, which has a lot of students in other projects outside of Mile Square, but the number we shared with them was 19.7% of fire calls at student housing off-campus. Combined fire calls, which would include the ones at the facilities and student housing, about 43.12%, but overall, for that five-year period, combined fire and EMS calls represent just under one-third of our calls for that time period, 2017, 2021. So, it was a good meeting, it was informative, I think, for both the city and Miami. They shared with us Miami officials the financial issues that they're, they are facing, but the bottom line was that they will not be able to contribute funds for additional fire EMS staff, and so we'll be scheduling a work session to discuss this with city council, and I know Council Pretheridge had suggested that we invite Miami officials to that meeting, I think that's a good idea, and also the student representatives of the student body for that meeting as well, because this is important, that we have sufficient staffing to deal with our fire EMS calls here in Oxford. So, more to come on that, and that's all I have this evening, unless you have some questions for me. Thank you.
Do you, it's probably going to come up in the work session, but do you know what percentage of students live outside of the Mile Square and on campus? Like, is that, they surely a quarter of them, they're not all, there's not like 80% of them live within the Mile Square and campus?
No, we don't have exact numbers of, like I said, the number that I shared with you for the student housing map was only in the Mile Square, and Chief Deathridge looked at specific addresses, excluded those that have families in the Mile Square, but, you know, didn't include the annex, it didn't include Level 27, it didn't include the gaslight, several other large projects, so I don't have a number, but, you know, that number would obviously be higher than that 19.7%, but even with the numbers that we shared with them, it's still one-third of our calls. And we also shared with them the revenue that we bring in at the fund firing EMS. Income tax, which is a quarter percent, provides about 60% of our revenue, EMS building and collections provides about 23% of our revenue, we have a contract with Oxford Township, which provides just under 6%, and then other, which includes the Mofer Township contract, and some others, smaller sources provide about 10%. So, you know, if you just look at the income tax revenue, because as we all know, Miami is the largest employer, Miami University is the largest employer within the city of Oxford, I believe that revenue percentage has been declining over the past several years, but even so, if you look, I think it was four years ago, it was about just under 50% of the income tax revenue, but, you know, income tax presently doesn't cover our existing expenses, if you throw in EMS going, we're still showing a deficit, and we shared that information with them, but in 2021, we have a $100,000 deficit, and that's without buying any large equipment. In 2022, we'll see soon, because they'll be closing the books, but we're looking at probably a $400,000 or more deficit. So, you know, we need to address this deficit, plus we also need to address the need for additional staffing because of the volume of calls that we're dealing with. But we'll go over all that information with you in a work session soon.
Maybe even encouragement to improving rescue behavior might help with saving costs.
Sure, sure.
Looking forward to it. And then to Mike, please?
He's saying, he's operating the...
We're having audio issues tonight, so he's our, yeah, thank you, Mike, he's working the cameras right now.
Wearing his other hat.
We just want to let council know that this will be my last night in front of you for a while. This Saturday, I have an opportunity to go to the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, I'll be gone for 10 weeks, so I'll be there through like March 16th, so it's a great opportunity, it's one of the leading schools for law enforcement managers, so I'm thankful that City Manager Elliot allowed me to go, I've been on this list for like six years now, so finally getting to do it, but hopefully learn some, you know, knowledge and skills out there that I can bring back to serve the citizens of Oxford, but you'll be in good hands here, so.
That's exciting, congratulations. Should we have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Keep on the back?
Nothing tonight. No, thank you.
Nothing, happy new year.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm excited to see everybody at the chocolate meltdown this weekend, or no, not this weekend, that's next weekend, thank you, Casey, I promise I was going to remember. So yes, the 14th is the chocolate meltdown at the Oxford Community Arts Center and Uptown, so looking forward to seeing everybody there, I think the weather should be okay. Thanks.
I'll forehand discussing our future funding of EMS and fire.
I wanted to make a special shout-out to all the folks who, when this terrible weather came in before Christmas, most of us hunkered back in our houses and hoped our furnaces would keep going, but other folks were out keeping our streets as, as clear as they could be, you know, 20 degrees under which salt doesn't work anymore, and our fire department was, so all those people, while the rest of us were safe in home, other people were out in really nasty conditions, trying to keep Oxford safe. Seems like we came through okay, but with a little too many water breaks and things like that, but it was really difficult conditions, so thanks for, for all the staff who kept the city go through a really tough weather period, so.
And the, looking at the, thanks for staying, normally people just like ditch us after they're done, so I appreciate it. It's a great presentation, and it's really exciting to see our council retreat coming up on the 20th Friday, we finalized 12 before, so that'd be exciting for us to take all those policy and programs and really put it to paper on being creative and what we can do to work on those plans, so, thank you. Okay, that being said, a motion to adjourn?
So move.
On favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn.